Good, how about you? Good to see you as well.
Mr. Cole, how are ya? Good to see you again. Going up the Door County this weekend?
Okay.
Taffin.
Okay, I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Malcheski.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustees Zerbal and Bukowski are excused this evening.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember all of our men and women stationed throughout the world. Okay, I have no additions to the agenda. If there are none, I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on open and closed minutes from May 22, 2018, Village Board regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Any comments on items not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on. Okay, number seven, League of Wisconsin Municipalities' presentation of municipal champions at the state capitol. We are very lucky in our area. So, with that, we're gonna have a presentation.
Just want to introduce Kurt Witinski from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and he'll kind of take over a little presentation to honor a couple of our local representatives that have been of great assistance to all the municipalities in Wisconsin.
Thank you, Allison. Good evening, Village Board. Good evening, President Kardowski. My name is Kurt Witinski, and I'm Deputy Director of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and we're very grateful that Ashwabanon is an active, longstanding member of our association. In fact, while I was driving up here, I was thinking in my head that while I've been working at the league, we've had two presidents from Ashwabanon and one board member. So Ted Pamperon, which I'm sure some of you remember, and Jerry Menney, and of course, Mike Aubinger. So all three of those gentlemen, I had the pleasure of working under or working with. And so we appreciate very much the role that Ashwabanon has played over the years in the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. So what I'm here tonight to do, and I really appreciate the opportunity to do this, and I'm joined by Gail Sumy from our league staff with me here. We are, there are 132 state legislators in the state capitol, 33 senators, 99 assembly persons. And we have, as an organization, decided and looked at a variety of factors to determine, who are the municipal champions in the capitol? Who support local control and are consistently supportive of initiatives that help local governments? And who helps block bad legislation that is trying to take away municipal powers or take away money that the state gives us? So when we looked at all the legislators, we came up with a list of, this last legislative session, eight of those 132 legislators that we can call municipal champions. And then we have a longer list of allies. But two of those municipal champions happen to come from your representatives. And so I'm very pleased tonight to recognize publicly first Senator Rob Coles. And I want to tell you a few things, Senator Coles, why he's on this list of municipal champions. Remind myself here. So throughout his long career in the state capitol, he's consistently been a supporter of local government. And by that, I mean, he'll call us in and take the initiative to say, Kurt, I'm concerned about these bills here, you know, and these are taking away some local powers. What can we do about them? What should I do about them? Do you have any alternative language, things like that? And that is a rarity, and we appreciate that. He's always got his heads up for local government, local government powers. And specifically, this session, he introduced, and was the author of, two pieces of legislation I want to mention. First was the Get Out the Lead Act, which authorized, and he was the main author in the senate, to introduce this piece of legislation and to work it through both houses, and then get it to the governor for his signature. And this bill allows cities and villages to work with their water utilities to come up with a financial assistance program to help private property owners replace their lead water service laterals. And this is an issue in many places around the state. And this bill creates a tool that communities did not have before. We needed this legislation because PSC was saying communities could not establish such a thing. So he was the author of that. It's Act 137. The other act that he was an author of, that we worked closely with him on, he was the senate lead, was a piece of legislation that says that when a community receives a public improvement that is built by a private party and that is donated to the city or the village, the competitive bidding requirements that ordinarily apply to public construction contracts do not apply in those situations. And so he was the lead author in the senate. Representative Mako was the lead author in the assembly. And so those are two examples of bills that were introduced that helped local governments, that passed, and were signed into law by the governor. And if I could, I'd like to call up Senator Coles, and just want to give him a token of our appreciation. And what I'm giving you, Rob, is a clock that has, pasted on it, a map of your district. And so it's not the usual plaque, but yeah, thanks a lot for all your support. We really appreciate it. The other person we want to recognize is Representative David Stephan. David's been in the assemblies, you know, this is your second, finished your second term?
Yes, sir.
And he's the former Village of Howard trustee. And right away, when he came into the state capitol two sessions ago, I knew we had a champion. Because he called me up and said, hey, I'm a former village trustee. I'm familiar with local government. I want to be a local government supporter in the state capitol. And we've worked on some legislative items, some pieces of legislation. And more importantly, this session, Representative Stephan, who serves on a local government committee in the assembly and also on the Ways and Means Committee, two committees that see a lot of bills that affect local governments. And he is a stalwart on those committees in pushing back against bills that might surface in those committees that are negative for local governments, take away our powers. We can count on him to ask the pointed questions of the proponents. And we could also count on him to stand up in his caucus for local governments in retaining their local control. And in two areas in particular this session, he was a very vocal champion, when it wasn't easy to be a vocal champion. And that was on our dark store bill and our reversing the Walgreens decision. Both those bills have to do with commercial property tax assessment and some of the, closing some of the loopholes we think that are unfair for other taxpayers. I know you're familiar with those bills. And Representative Stephan was the champion in his caucus on those bills. And I'd like to call you up, David, and give you a plaque in honor of your, with deep appreciation for your support for municipalities, this session or last session. Thanks. As a politician, he wants to say it.
I can't help myself. Listen, I just want to say one thing. So if you remember, not this last session, but a session before, when we worked with the Village of Alaway on creating the state's first premier economic development district to provide an opportunity for the first time in the history, 80 years, 90 years, to have some opportunity for the movement of many things, including liquor licenses across boundaries, as well as provide two additional liquor licenses for Title Town District. It was Kurt Witinski who was right in there with me, working every day on the crafting of that legislation. And so a big thanks for the League of Municipalities for everything you guys do. Remember, he's one lobbyist who has to work all 132 offices, and he does a great job. So thank you, Kurt, for all you do, and for the League of Municipalities for all they do.
I'd just like to thank Senator Coles and Representative Stephan's. You know, some of the bills that have gone through haven't gone the way we wanted them. Some of them haven't even gone through. But thank you for always being there and always very, very quick to respond when I call their offices. And that's a huge thing. So thanks to both of you. Thanks, Rob.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, number eight, we have written communications or announcements. Eight A is, I would like Pat to read the letter that we received from Mr. Ed Kirchmar.
Dear members of the Ashwabanon Village Board, now that the new signs are up, the dugouts are almost completed, and the field is back to playable condition, I feel it's time to formally express my most sincere appreciation for the wonderful effort and financial commitment by the Ashwabanon Village Board to restoring Ed Kirchmar Field at Clipstein Park. The discovery of the contaminate soil and the necessity of very expensive remediation surely had put into question what would happen to the field that had such a rich school history, was centrally located, and so convenient for non-driving high school athletes. For almost 40 years, the field at Clipstein Park had been one of the top fields in the area, and it was the center of spring and summer baseball in Ashwabanon. In the fall of 2015, I was at a school board meeting when Mark Williams told the school board that the Ashwabanon Village Board was willing to reconstruct the baseball field at an estimated expense of $345,000 if the school board would agree to a 50-50 shared cost. I was thrilled and honored that the village board was willing to reconstruct the field, knowing the already high cost of the necessary remediation, and knowing that budgets are very tight with many worthy projects needing attention. With the recommendation and leadership of Village President Mike Aubinger, who was at the meeting, a willingness to take the lead and work out the plan, it seemed obvious that the school district would not have been able to come up with the finances to support their half of the cost of reconstructing the baseball field at Clipstein Park. I truly believe that the baseball field at Clipstein Park is once again being developed into an outstanding facility because of the hard work of many people. I'm extremely grateful to the Village, Ashwabanon Village Board, the Ashwabanon Park Board under the leadership of Mark Williams, the Village's Park and Recreation Director Rex Melberg, the Ashwabanon Youth Baseball Organization, and all the others from the Village of Ashwabanon who have been involved in the reconstruction project. Thank you for all your efforts and support in making Ed Kirchmar Field at Clipstein Park a very special facility for Ashwabanon baseball players, their families, and all baseball fans. With deepest appreciation, signed, Ed Kirchmar.
I wanted, the reason why I wanted that letter read was because that's truly a collaborative effort between the school board and the village board to get that done. Because neither one of us would have been able to do it by ourselves. So kudos to the school board, kudos to the village board. So we need to receive and place on file, correct?
Make a motion to do that?
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and place on file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number nine, action on consent agenda, nine A.
Can we back up?
Two.
Can I make comments, announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, Doug, you're peeking around the corner. Steve Burr, you've helped me out on this project, not a project, but the problems we've got in the northeast corner of our village with all the reconstruction going on. I've never had so many calls saying, where in the heck do I go to get through this area? Even to the compost center. I just got a bad feeling in my mind why all this construction happened at once. I know there's a reason for it, but I'm questioning, after Mike McCarthy, we thought this would move along a little faster, but it hasn't. And we're doing it, we scheduled it, that's fine. But I sure hope this can get some alternate routes, even though we can, even though it's still a process to get some decent in and outs of our access roads back to Ashland Avenue. I get calls from the businesses down there, and they're all complaining, I'm losing business. So I just want to make a point, I hope something can be done to take care of this problem that will continue till the frost comes again. So that's my concern about that area. Thank you.
You know, when we decided to do Mike McCarthy, it kind of would have been, if we didn't do the two roads this year, it would be the two roads getting done next year. Because we're doing the utilities on Cormier this year, and we're doing the full construction of Mike McCarthy this year. And then next year, we have to do the actual road surface of Cormier. So, you know, it is unfortunate. I am, you know, feel for the people that have had a hard time getting to the businesses, but...
Well, to add hurt to the injury, you know, now they're gonna dig up the frontage road and run drain pipes over to the pond that they're gonna build. Now you're gonna shut down that road completely to all those people in the frontage road.
The good news is, we appreciate Gary Yu passing those comments and those phone calls on to us because it helps us discuss some of the traffic control features that we put out there and some of the changes that we've made in order to keep the traffic moving. Two examples are, both Cormier and Holmgren, and Mike McCarthy and Holmgren were due to be closed at separate times, completely closed, in order to get the utility work done. And we worked with the contractors, and they were willing to do it under traffic so that those closures didn't happen. Lane closures did, but full closures didn't. Now, is that perfect? Absolutely not. Construction never is. It's always a big boil on your behind when you're going through it. But those comments and those questions that are sent to us give us the ability to go back and work those things out with the contractor to see if we can try and assist a little bit. We knew going into the season, once we heard Mike McCarthy was going to be brought forward for construction, it was gonna be a painful one. When you do two consecutive roadways, east-west roadways within a community, excuse me, you're going to feel, you're going to feel some pain. The good news is, we're about at the peak of the pain right now. And over the course of the next two weeks here, you're going to see some of the restoration get finished up on Cormier Road between Holmgren and Ashland that'll allow us to open that section back up. Mike McCarthy Way is actually about, about a week ahead of schedule. So that's good, good news on that front. You see him out on Holmgren Way right now, finishing the sanitary sewer work. Starting next week, they'll be starting the storm sewer work, and the roadway excavation's gonna follow behind that. So by the middle to end of July, you're going to start seeing the roadway excavation portion or roadway paving start getting set up. So the good news is, is we've had somewhat decent weather this year, and the contractors have been able to make some hay on these projects. And if folks can hang in there with us for another couple of weeks, they're gonna start seeing some improvements for their access.
Okay, Doug, I know you and Steve are working hard on it, so I appreciate that. Hopefully, we can get some alternative routes for these people.
Yeah. Okay. Action on consent agenda, nine A, request to approve operator's license for June of 2018. Nine B, general fund financials, May of 2018. Nine C, budgeted expenditures. Nine D, department reports for June 2018. Does anybody want any poll for discussion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 10, public hearings. Number one, public hearing on a request by Chad Chemnitz of Professional Consultants, Inc., agent for JD By Rider, for a conditional use permit to operate an automobile sales facility located at 2805 Ramada Way. Is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against this item? Anybody who would like to speak for or against this item? Anybody who would like to speak for or against this item?
Move to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number two, public hearing regarding ordinance 06-2-18, amending a planned unit development overlay zoning for certain land located at Element Way, Village Center LLC, and Sketchworks Architecture LLC. Anybody here like to speak for or against this item? Anybody here like to speak for or against this item? Anybody here like to speak for or against this item? Hearing none. Move to approve.
Move to close the hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing's closed. Number three, public hearing regarding ordinance 06-3-18, amending table 17-5-100 Perrin A, reducing certain R1 and R2 zoning district required front yard setbacks. Anybody here like to speak for or against this? Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Anybody here like to speak for or against this item? Hearing none.
Move to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close this hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing's closed. Number four, public hearing regarding ordinance number 06-1-18, repealing and replacing section 17-2-200, site plan approval requirements and repealing section 17-6-700, Policy for Site Plan Review Committee. Chapter 17, Planning and Zoning Code of the Village of Ashwabanon Municipal Code. Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Hearing none.
Move to close the hearing.
We have a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing is closed. Okay, number 11, action items. 11A, action on a request by Chad Chemnitz of Professional Consultants, Inc., agent for JD By Rider, for a conditional use permit to operate an automobile sales facility located at 2805 Ramada Way. Todd.
As a brief description, JB By Rider currently operates a automobile dealership at 2800 Ramada Way, which is right across the street. They do it jointly with Rust Darrow. They are in need of additional space. Therefore, JB By Rider would be moving their facility across the street to the 2805 Ramada Way. In my attachments there, it is the former Saturn Used Car Dealership was across the street. Then Berkstrom Cadillac had a car dealership there. It has been vacant for a number of years now. And they are hoping to reopen it as a automobile dealership for JB By Rider. It's a very slender lot between two hotels in that location. No other changes to the site. They're gonna be doing a little bit of interior work on the building and signage on the exterior. But this would be a conditional use to operate a automobile sales facility at 2805 Ramada Way.
Todd, I don't have a problem with it, I guess, but I thought that they moved out of there because there's, I went by there the other day, and if there was six cars there, I was surprised.
I have not heard from them, other than the fact that they were looking at jumping over. I can reach out to, the owner, I think, is Berkstrom yet. I've not been able to do that, but I wasn't aware that they're moving out. My understanding, according with the attached letters, that they were separating so that they had additional space. But they're moving out only six cars.
There's hardly any cars on that lot, that Saturn lot right now. I know that.
That's seven more than I seen, Mark.
What's that?
That's seven more than I seen a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Why do they need the extra lot? But I don't have a problem with it, but it's like, why are they expanding if there's no cars out there for sale or service or nothing?
Yeah, according to the letter that they had submitted along with it, it says, currently Rust Darrow Group and JB By Rider share a building at 2800 Ramada Way. The proposal is to vacate, maybe just vacate in 2800 Ramada Way building and have a JB By Rider only relocate to 2805 Ramada Way. So maybe it's, maybe they're actually vacating the 2800 completely and moving their facility across the street. Rust Darrow might be going away. I could, I guess I'd need to verify that, to be honest.
I just don't know what we want to do here. If there's, if they're vacating, there's no cars, like Gary just said. He said there's that seven more cars than he saw down there. I just went down there last week, and there was nothing in that lot.
Todd, didn't that come in front of the site plan? Didn't you announce it or something?
I may have, may have announced it.
I think you did.
Because the only thing that's coming forward is gonna be a signage on the exterior and some interior remodeling. There's nothing being done to the site itself.
The signage is coming forward, or?
They may not have to. Depends on if it applies with the ordinance, it does not have to go through site plan.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess it's their prerogative if they want to get this use permit and then take their time of opening it up. So I don't think there's a lot we can know about it, other than why aren't we there?
I guess I could point out real quickly, and if they do vacate the other one, it sits vacant for over a year, then the, I believe my understanding is that one can no longer be used as a automobile dealership because it'd be vacated for a year. So that one would probably go away. If there's no activity gonna be done there, and that's something that we'll monitor very closely.
It just might be slow in moving forward. All right, I'll move to approve the conditional use permit for the operation of an auto sales facility at 2805 Ramada Way.
I'll second it, I guess, but I mean, I'd just like to find out what, you know, if they're gonna be using any of the lots, to be very honest with you.
I will certainly check into that. I'll reach out to them tomorrow and find out what their status is.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit located at 2805 Ramada Way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11B, action regarding ordinance 06-2-18, amending a planned unit development overlay zoning for certain land located at Element Way, Village Center LLC, and Sketchworks Architecture LLC. Aaron.
The proposed PUD amendment is for building number two of the Element apartment project. The original PUD had building number two as a five-story, 67-unit building. Due to some construction issues with building number one, they are changing building number two, or would like to change building number two to a four-story, 71-unit building. If you take a look at the proposed PUD in the packet, the footprint of the building will extend further to the east, which would go over the planned green space, kind of urban amenity that they had for their residence. That area will be replaced between buildings three and four along the proposed trail that continues to the north off the property. That will be reviewed as part of the building three and four PUD amendments when those come through and/or site plan. The reasoning for the change in the design of the apartment is to accommodate the underground parking that extends out from underneath the buildings into the surface parking lot. They had to reinforce the surface parking to accommodate our public safety vehicles as well as any other heavy moving trucks, roping trucks that may come across that surface parking lot.
Any questions?
Is there any negative impact to the tip while you're doing this?
No, there's actually an increase in the number of units from 68 to 71. So it's actually a net positive.
You know, I like these iPads and everything, but I can tell you one thing. Looking at schematics of buildings and everything sure does make it hard. That's the only thing I don't like about them, because I couldn't tell which is building one and building two.
Building one is on the corner of Marvell and Element Way. Building two is immediately to the north of it.
I think if you look at, how do I tell you? 77 mark, you'll see the road configuration there showing building two. That was brought in front of the site plan, other than losing a few apartments. But the landscaping, I think, moving into the center will probably enhance the property for recreational purposes for the people that live there. It's still a nice project. If you went down Marvell, you see, you see they're getting out of the ground now. There's pillars standing on the, on the foundation of the, of the foundation. There's pillars standing on the foundation of the foundation, I should say. So they're moving ahead on that building one, so I think it's going to be a nice project when they're done. If there's no other questions, I'll move to approve Village Center... Where am I here? Ordinance 6-2-18 amending the PUD development for the overlay zoning of the Element Way Village Center LLC.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we need to include in the motion also the conditions of approval that are...?
Yes, please.
Which is going down to four floors, moving the landscaping to the center of the complex.
The conditions of approval are coordinate with Ashwabhanan Public Works on utility connections, coordinate with Ashwabhanan Public Works to make sure the existing storm sewer is not within the footprint of building number two, provide landscape screening for the electrical transformer shown on sheet C 1.0 in the southwest corner of the building. And that was it for the conditions of approval that Plan Commission had.
You said that very good, Aaron.
Easy to read them off.
Okay, we have a motion.
No second yet.
And no second. We have a motion and a second to recommend approval or to approve ordinance 06-2-18 with the conditions of approval as stated by Aaron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number C, action regarding ordinance 06-3-18 amending table 17-5-100 Perron A, reducing certain R1 and R2 zoning district required front yard setbacks. Aaron?
All right, this was just before the Plan Commission. As discussed at Plan Commission, there are a few streets, primarily looking at Cormier, South Ridge, I'm sorry, Ridge Road, South United Street, Center Street, Crary, Magnolia, where due to changes in the road designation, the setbacks have increased to the point where a number of homes are now legal non-conforming structures. We have had requests from citizens to improve the fronts of their homes, whether it's for ramps or porch improvements, who currently cannot do that due to the homes being legal non-conforming structures. This would reduce the setbacks in both the R1 and R2 districts from a varying 35 and 25 feet to a standard 20 feet.
Does it do anything with side yard setbacks at all, or just front yard?
This would just be front yard setbacks.
Because when I talked to the couple people on the zoning board, they said that because of the small lots and everything, they have problems with the side lots as well.
It is some... The overall setbacks are something that Todd and I have discussed. We need to take a look at, not just for a number of parts of the community, but especially along the river, as well as some of the older parts of the community. It's something that we are, it's on our agenda to look at more holistically. This was something where we had a couple requests that came up, say we need to do something now, so we had to address this one. The request came from the residents. We thought, let's take care of this right now. But we will address those other ones more holistically in the near future.
Okay, because I know it's been a pain in their butts, to be very honest with you.
You know, on Early Street, boy, it seems like some of them homes are sitting right on the curb.
And there are some that, no matter what you do, I mean, you could reduce it to, you know, a certain setback, but there does need to be a certain setback there to accommodate any utility easements that might be running through there. Usually a typical 12-foot utility easement. So I want to make sure that we don't allow for building on top of those easements either. So that's why we need to take a bigger look at the village as a whole, to make sure we don't kind of rush to anything.
Well, that was probably done before there was ever any ordinance, it's probably. So, all right.
All right, if no other comments, move to approve ordinance 06-3-18 reducing certain R1 and R2 zoning district required front yard setbacks. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 06-3-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11D, discussion and action regarding ordinance 06-1-18 repealing and replacing section 17-2-200, site plan approval requirements and repealing section 17-6-700, Policy for Site Plan Review Committee, Chapter 17 Planning and Zoning Code of the Village of Ashwabhanan Municipal Code. Aaron?
The proposed repeal and recreate for the site plan design review ordinance for the Village of Ashwabhanan was one of my first charges. When I started here with the village, the ordinance as it's currently laid out is not very user-friendly. So this is meant to address the readability of the ordinance, as well as take care of some of the issues that were popping up at site plan pretty regularly. And I think Gary Supervisor or Trustee Paul can attest to that. So we wanted to address such issues as exposed fasteners, curbing, parking, allowing for certain exceptions due to specific site constraints, as well as any other bolted items that identified in the packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the site plan ordinance.
I know that there was a lot of questions when I first started to chair site plan, and there was a lot of questions on some of these issues, and I think they're cleaned up quite well in this ordinance.
I didn't go through with this bullet by bullet, because there's a lot of stuff here in this agenda. And I'm not on Site Plan Review Committee or never have been, to be very honest with you. But I have built some buildings in Ashwabhanan and done some different things, and does this restrict just about everything? I mean, or, you know, is there any... Anything a business owner can do now to have its individuality, if you will?
What this does is actually it expands the allowable materials. There are new products that are coming out, you know, almost yearly at this point, that are really quality materials from an architectural standpoint that we think are much preferable to things such as EPIS, and that it provides, again, that character that a business owner may want to provide for his or her business.
We discussed this at site plan quite thoroughly. I think we've got to give Aaron a lot of credit for revising this to make it more readable for the people that come in front of the village for whatever reasons to do their business here. So knowing the time and effort that put into it, make it a lot more legible. I'll move to approve this if there's no other questions.
I'll second. I've read a bunch of this. I like this. Okay, so I've got a question before you vote. Does it give the board members flexibility?
The board members by, you mean the Site Plan Review Committee?
Yes.
Yes, it does. What it does is it provides an exception process whereby if, say, a business owner comes forth and says, based upon the site constraints that I have in my business, I actually have to have a loading dock that'll be set back from the street, but I have to have this in the front yard or facing front due to the manufacturing flow. It comes in one side of the building, comes out the other. The Site Plan Committee can't allow for an exception to the rules based upon that documented issue. So the process is basically to identify that as an exception in the minutes and say, this is why this issue or this exception was permitted in this situation. But it's meant to be a... It's not meant to be an easy process. It's meant to say, all right, based upon your documented issue that you have with this site, with this business, with your workflow, we understand that it's meant to provide that flexibility to allow for that process to happen.
Okay, in this policy, if I wanted a pink building, could I do it?
We don't control color.
Can't control color.
We control building types. So if it's pink EPIS, no. If it's pink brick, yes.
You know, really, Mark, it really gives the people more flexibility coming forward with us to... We do have guidelines, but it gives us some flexibility and hardships when a person really needs something that isn't in our guidelines. And if he pleads his case right, we can help him out there. This is basically what it amounts. And I think the example of a loading dock, I know I use that quite often, but it does happen in some incidents of a flow of business works.
Yep. Okay, any more discussion?
I don't know. Have to try it once and see what happens, I guess.
Well, you know, the one thing I have to say, Mark, being, like I said, now I've now for a year been chairing the Site Plan Review Committee, and it does help the committee members make an easier decision. Otherwise, you kind of had to, like, waiver, or you didn't know if you should allow it, you shouldn't allow it. It sets it up to clear for the members, so.
And I guess I'd like to point out real quick, too, having been on this, you know, a staff member to site plan for the past 18 years, it has been a struggle, especially to me, I like to see the fact that we're opening up to more materials that are allowed. Right now, the current ordinance as it is before the change here tonight, if it goes through, it's required to be 100% brick. Well, if you start having 100% brick on most of your retail and commercial buildings, they start all to look, start looking the same. They want to start getting metal material, now not decorated, but more architectural metal panels. Start mixing some other variety of materials in there, starts giving, like you had mentioned earlier, the character of buildings. So I'm looking forward to these changes, because I think it's going to help not only the staff members and the site plan members facilitate through these, but it's also going to help the proprietors and developers bring in something unique and still be compatible with the surrounding area.
So if someone wants to build a building and it conforms to all these things that we're putting in there, does it have to go before site plan and review?
Yes, it still must go before Site Plan Review Committee, but at that point, it's usually, it's a pretty quick review process.
Even if it's conforming, you still have to go through it?
Yes, because it does change the site from what's currently there.
Okay.
You know, one example I always use is... Oh, I can't think of the building. Taco Will. That guy came here with a pretty good plan. By the time he left here, he came out with a better plan, just from the conversations we had around the table with the committee members on the site plan. So, and they all fell within the flexibility of what we could do for them. And that was kind of done before this new... The revising the codes for the site plan, but we... Between the group of people we got there, I mean, we enjoy working with the people to get their project...
Yeah, but you can't go by the people that are on the board now, because it's the people that you're setting this code for down there 10 years from now that it's going to affect, and you don't know what that makeup's going to be.
Well, then, let's say 10 years out from now, that could change, too.
Right.
Anything could change. And that's what we're doing tonight.
With section nine and 10, our appeal and options that are available to a potential perma-tee. So I think this is good. And I like to see urban design guidelines being used.
Okay, any more discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Call the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 06-1-18. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11E, action on a request for exterior building alterations located at 780 Armed Forces Drive. Todd?
This is the Best Western facility over on Armed Forces Drive. What they're proposing to do is have a facelift in some areas. They're proposing to do is a new canopy in the front entrance. As you can see, it's a little more stately than what's currently there. It's kind of an arched one now. This would be more of a flat one with a better under clearance and everything else that's in there. As well as around all the entrance ways, they will be putting more of a massing, wall massing up there, which will include more of a taller EPIS wall, a taller facade. Currently, right now, it's just kind of recessed in with a small canopy over the top. This will actually create a little more massing to it. Those will be EPIS material. Then on the back of the building, I guess is the probably one of the bigger changes, which would be the north elevation. There currently is a set of exterior stairway. It's one of your last pages, I believe, in the document. That will actually become somewhat enclosed, because they will put a screen wall on there that will help screen that from public view, plus it will keep it out of the elements a little better. And then along with that, they will be painting the existing block that's on there. It is a smooth face block, so any dressing up with different material, of course, is an enhancement. It will be kind of a two-tone gray that they're going to be going on there with. And they also will be replacing all fencing, including creating some rooftop screening of mechanical equipment. That will be more of a vinyl fence, so a little bit more durable, but also less maintenance on it. And then the last thing I'd just like to point out, with the change of the north elevation with that screen wall, the Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission both required, or is a condition of their approval, that the landscape plan that they show on there be implemented to the extent where public safety can still have access with their fire lane. It is a little questionable in regards to that 24 feet, if that's going to be maintained. But wherever 24 feet is not required, the rest of it would have to be landscape material. So the two conditions would be submitting a landscape plan to the village forester, as well as maintaining the landscape as much as possible on the north side of the building.
Okay.
Todd, did we, on that north elevation, is that approved? I know there was a question on it. Have you looked into that to make sure that that is going to be that way?
That is something that we're still working with, with the fire inspection.
You had to go with the fire...
Correct. We've got to maintain that on their property. We've got to maintain the 24 feet. And that is a shared driveway between the Midway, the Arena Motel, as well as Fox 11. It does use that, so we do have to maintain a fire lane through there. Once that's determined, as far as the 24 feet, we'll have a better understanding. The contractor's not come forward for a permit yet. So once that is addressed, we'll make sure that 24 feet is maintained, and we'll try to implement as much landscape in there as possible.
Okay, are there any other questions? The conditions are the...
Submitting a landscape plan
Yep.
to the forester with the species and the amount of plantings, as well as implementing the landscaping on the north side.
All right, again, that came through the plan board, or site plan. It's an improvement. I know there's a few people in here that think something else should be done, but we've got to live with what we got. Like I said, it is an improvement, but we'll have to leave it at that. Right now, I'd have a better word for it, but I don't think you want to hear it. So, any... No more discussion. I'll move to approve the alterations located at 780 Armed Forces Drive.
With the conditions of approval.
With the statement of approval from Mr. Kerbers.
Okay, I'll second.
And I can't repeat that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the building alterations at 780 Armed Forces Drive. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11F, action on review and award of the 2018 mill and resurfacing contract. Mr. Burr?
Sitting in for Mr. Burr tonight is Mr. Martin. And Gary, Gary, hold that paper airplane you're looking to throw at the engineers here for doing more construction in the village in 2018.
All right, I'll reframe from...
What this is, is our typical milling and resurfacing contract that we have each year. We go through and take off the top two inches of asphalt on a number of streets in the village, repave them, typically do, we aim to do about five miles of street per year. That is our goal. That is what we put out for bid. In terms of funding, we generally have a little bit less than that this year's bids. Again, we received two bids from Northeast Asphalt and MCC Incorporated. Lowest responsible bidder was MCC Incorporated for $727,629. We're asking for approval of MCC with the understanding that we'll be meeting with them to pare down the work to meet our budget constraints. This work is generally done under traffic. The milling is done. People can drive into their homes, take the street that they live on when this work is being done on. Paving is usually about two days' worth of work on each street. And what kicks it all off is, upon approval tonight, we send out letters to all the people living on the streets where we're going to be doing work. Just after the Fourth of July holiday, there'll be some spot curb and gutter repair and utility repair. And right now, it's aiming around the middle of July to do some of the milling work and then resurf... then resurfacing after that. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Can you explain, Doug, why that Ashwabhanan does not have to pay these, there are these people that don't have to pay this, just for the record, please, why they don't, like Green Bay has to pay for their street improvements if they own there?
The the village takes care of its maintenance of its roadways through the tax, the general tax roll. We do not assess the maintenance worker. We do not assess repaving to the property owners. That's handled through our our general fund, through the taxes. Other communities, DePere had done it for a number of years also, where when they did any types of repairs to the roadways, they they assessed them back to those property owners. Conversely, when when a road or a utility is first put in, a brand-new road, new subdivisions, that can be assessed. But general practice, since I've been here, is a developer comes in looking to develop an area, they cover the cost of doing that work, so there is no assessment, and then they reap the benefits of of selling those lots when it's done. So when a utility has first gone in, I don't want anybody to think that they won't ever get an assessment in Ashwabhanan, but if you have a vacant lot with no services to it, and you request a service to be run to it, you will have a a payment to make at that time. But in terms of maintenance, that's covered under your rates or under the taxes.
Thank you.
Make sense?
Yep.
I've had several several people call me and tell me that Ashwabhanan is a pretty special place to live because of all the services that we do deliver to our residents.
I'd like to add to that, Mary. At the political hub of Ashwabhanan, which is now in a different restaurant, we discussed the roads in Ashwabhanan. And naturally, there were a few people that said, well, we got a little bump here or there. I said, you know what? Take a ride to another community surrounding Green Bay. Ashwabhanan, excuse me. God slapped me in the face for that. Anyway, we do have good roads here, and they did realize that after we discussed it for a while. There's a few people that are wondering when their roads are going to get done, and with the grading system that the street department has, I think one will get done next year that I don't have to mention any names, but they're well satisfied with it. They realize that we do live in Wisconsin and our roads do deteriorate. It's funny, you get out of Wisconsin and all of a sudden, your vehicle seems to operate a little different because of our climate here, so.
You sure you better you better announce the name of that road, that Dover Way one that was announced about 10 times a meeting for 10 years before it got done, so, by unnamed trustees, so.
Unnamed.
Yeah.
Anyway, Doug had conversation with this elderly fellow, and I'm sure it'll be taken care of shortly.
He's he's given me direction just about every year that I've worked here, so it's always good to hear from him.
Is is
But just
One of the type of people that can walk in here and knows where he's going. Am I correct?
Just to update everybody, as Gary mentioned, we have a rating system that's done every other year on all of the roads. All the roads are driven every other year, and ratings are given to them, so we can prioritize which roads are the worst, and then put together our paving plans from that. That being said, each spring after the thaw takes place, we have our tentative list of roads, and we go through that list to see if there's some of those other roads that are close in rating that may have, you know, hopscotched over due to a bad winter, things of that nature. So it isn't just a a drive-through every other year, and then that's the list, and it's going to be that way. We we tend to go back through it each year just to make sure we aren't missing a road that that comes due. We have a number of roads in the village here. As everybody knows, that that industrial park was built in the mid-'90s. You had 20 years on to that, 25 years on to that. That's starting to come due now, and that's where we're starting to see some of these roads show up. We had been doing a lot of residential roads. Now, we're going to have a couple of those industrial parks, road industrial park roads come through over the next few years, because it's getting to that age that we have to to upkeep them. So that's one of the unique aspects.
Doug, in the industrial park, those roads are used heavily with semi-traffic, which, you know, they're running 80,000 pounds of weight on them all of that. Is grinding and just repaving going to fix that, or are we going to have to do more work than that?
Yeah, what we have to do is we have to look at those those roads. Those roads, when they were constructed, were built with more gravel base underneath them. So what we look for are bad spots where there's alligator cracking. That tells us the base is failing there. If you have the standard cracks, you can mill and resurface it one time and get another 20 years out of it. But it's those those alligatored areas that we kind of keep an eye out for, and we try and get those roads. If you're out in industrial park, Commodity Lane is the one we're doing this year.
Yeah.
And you'll see there there's a lot of cracks going across the road. You don't see a lot of alligatored cracks where the the asphalt is crumbled up. That tells you that the base is bad underneath it, and it's pumping when it when it gets wet and you drive over it. As long as we don't get to that point, then reconstruction isn't necessary, and you can do a little bit more economical fix on it.
Doug, one other question. On this, we have a contract or a bid for 727, 629, but we only have budgeted $600,000. So do we make a motion for the $600,000? Or do you have some buried some in the, is there other places in the budget that?
I I would ask that the contract be be awarded for that amount, with $600,000 being the budgeted cap on it. And then staff would be would have to review with the contractor which roads we can trim off to get to that $600,000 number.
So the the final bid is the 727?
Correct. That's the bid that was submitted. That's what we'd have to be approved. We're going to work with the contractor to get
You haven't worked with them yet, the contractor?
Not on final
No, we've met, we've met with them
Oh, you have?
To go through the project, but they have to get us those numbers, so we can trim that down.
All right. But you're you're holding at the $600,000.
I'll make a motion that we approve MCC for the bid of 727, 629, with recommended staff to stick with the 2018 general fund dollars of $600,000.
Sorry.
Basically what you wanted, Doug?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the bid to MCC for 727, 629, and staff will work with them to pare it down to $600,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Request to approve MOU with Brown County regarding the Expo Center. Allison, finally.
I was just going to thank Doug for that engineering moment. Thanks for listening to him. You made Doug's day.
I didn't even get to say Batuminous. I got to say that now.
My topic seems far less exciting now. We are finally hoping to get underway with the expansion of the Expo Center. This would be the 100 and 120,000 square foot Expo space in place of the Arena and Shopko Hall. This MOU outlines the responsibilities of the village and the county in this process. It's similar to what happened with the construction of the Rush Center, where ultimately the village CDA issues the lease revenue bonds, and the county backs that debt and takes a lease for that space. And that's what we're setting up in this case. So village staff and county staff, along with staff members at PMI, will go through an RFP process, design, and then ultimately go through construction of the the new Expo Center. The agreement also outlines trying to work together to get naming rights. It also commits the county to using excess sales tax from the original stadium sales tax in the amount of 4.6 million towards the project, and then a small smaller amount of 15 million from new sales tax will go into it. The bulk of the funds do come from room tax dollars. And then we will work through final bonding structure and whatnot for the project, once we know better costs and timing of how things will work. But this essentially kicks kicks this all off.
I I've gotten a lot of questions on, are we still going to go through with this, considering that there's that lawsuit with the county for the half percent? And I just want to tell people that the half percent sales tax is only $15 million of this $93 million project. So we will be going forward with this, because that we're not dependent on that half percent sales tax. It's paid for with room tax, so.
So do they, if something defaults on here, Ashwabhanan is not on the hook for this?
Correct.
Brown County is ultimately the one that's on the on the hook for it, being paid mainly by the room tax.
Correct. And this really outlines the ultimate responsibilities. We'll separate, we'll come back, probably a year from now, and do a lease, which outlines the actual bonding for it. The original responsibilities at this point really are for when we kick off a contract for architect, architectural service, construction manager. But that would again lie on the county side of it, and our intention really is to use the cash on hand for those things in terms of the earlier portion of the project, and see how far those dollars stretch out before we can, before we actually do bonding. But the county would back all of the debt.
So do we, do we bond for this and everything ourselves, then?
Ultimately, the CDA will issue the bonds. There, it's specifically called the lease revenue bond. That's the nature of the, it allows you to get reduced interest costs by do, would otherwise be a taxable debt structure.
Does it, does it affect our debt structures, I mean, that our debt borrowing that we can have?
No. Not as the village know, and not really as the CDA know. It's outside of our general borrowing capacity.
There's no maximum debt that we can, we have to, we're going to come up against by doing this?
Correct. The village has a maximum debt amount in terms of what our bond rating would be, but this would not affect the bond rating.
Yeah, CDA is treated as its own entity as regards to debt service. So our our cap, if you will, is 5% of our equalized value. The CDA does not factor into that at all, or any existing debt with the CDA. It's its own entity, and has its own bonding schedules and and bonding limits.
By virtue of the the lease revenue format, it's a, it's a different type of financing mechanism, if you will, that is considered outside of what would affect the village.
So no general tax dollars of our budget go into the CDA or the funding of this project?
Correct.
Just want to make sure that that is stated publicly, so that
Correct.
They know.
Correct. The county has approved this agreement last week in the format that you see, so then this would be the final approval of it.
Allison, are we the forerunner in this MOU with all the villages and cities involved?
Really, this only involves the Village of Ashwabhanan and the in Brown County and PMI as the operator. In terms of the actual construction, about a year ago, we went through the room tax agreements, which put in place the room tax flow of funds to be able to use them for this. So the other municipalities, specifically in terms of this point in time in terms of going forward and the bonding that will happen and the design, construction, the other municipalities will not really have a role in this. They've already approved the mechanism for that flow of funds
Okay.
of the of the room tax dollars.
Okay, that that was their portion six months ago, whenever that happened. Okay.
All right. So you mentioned something, you know, we know about the county and everything, and you just mentioned something about PMI. Does PMI have anything to do with this, or not?
They're not part of our agreement. They're they're referenced in there. Obviously, we we appreciate their input. They are a successful operator of that business, and we want to make sure that how we design the building, that we have that expertise at the table, if you will, in terms of voting on, you know, if we were to consider and say, we want this project manager, that's really between the village and the county. And then separately, the county and PMI will enter into a lease operator management agreement, but we will not be a party to that document.
So are we, is everything okay? I know it was pretty contentious at the county board level here a while ago, you know, when we first put this in and everything, with Ashwabhanan only having two representatives on the county board. I mean, we're not going to get into this and have issues.
Past unanimous.
I don't
Did it?
Last week.
I think so. I think
I I think the bigger, the bigger contentious item was last year, when we spent two meetings at every municipality and county board, you know, asking for the room tax dollars to all be shifted through 2042 into this project. That's the excess.
I just want to make sure we're covering all our bases here by not having enough conversation on a $100 million project here in Ashwabhanan, when they probably have a two-hour conversation at the county level, when there's only two of us, or two representatives there.
Right. I think that will take place, though, before the bonding takes place. It's a little bit of chicken in the egg. The the county and PMI are in agreement that they need to renegotiate the lease, or the operation management agreement between them. The terms, however, are a little bit undecided in terms of, we don't know what the space looks like when it's going into operation. All those conversations still have to take place. We still have to figure out the timing of it. You know, there's a considerable amount of, you know, they use the arena, they use Shopko Hall a lot, and so that it's a whole change in their current operations and and trying to figure out scheduling and when demolition can happen, all that kind of stuff. So all those conversations still have to take place, and ultimately, all that would be done before we really kick off and go in terms of a bonding and really spending those those dollars. But right now, we really need to just start with some design and get some expertise from people who are in being able to design the building and give us some guidance on construction and timing, and then PMI's input in terms of what does that facility look like, you know? Construction or design things changes, and now you don't have a sheet of ice, or you don't have a basketball court or flexible seating, that's going to change the financial cash flow for PMI and the county.
I know that, I mean, I'm not opposed to this project at all. I just want to make sure that
It's a tangled web.
Some questions on it, I mean.
Extremely complicated, but I think our role is more of a limited partner, if you will, in terms of what our, what our influence is into the into it and what our liabilities are to it. We're really a facilitator more than anything else. It is definitely good for us to do this project. We have some of our own ideas that we would like to see some enhancements to that corner. It's a very valuable, visible corner, and I think there's some bigger draws that can be brought and better, bigger benefits to the village in doing it. So it's it's good for us to facilitate, but you're certainly right in trying to be cautious and making sure, you know, at the end of the day, we do not want to own and operate that facility, and we are not.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Village Brown County MOU pertaining to the Brown County Expo Facility.
Do we have
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the MOU with Brown County for the Expo Center. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. H, discussion and action on Ordinance 06-4-18 amending Ashwabhanan Municipal Code, Section 9-1-1, and Resolution R 6-2-18 amending Ashwabhanan bond schedule.
Okay, this is a, an item for cleanup, as well as some adoption of additional criminal violations that are contained in state statutes. We, this ordinance would adopt them locally, so we would have the ability to issue citations for the offenses that are listed in Ordinance 6-4-18. So it basically gives public safety greater enforcement authority, and to also make sure that the specific offenses listed in Ordinance 9-1-1 are also linked up and corrected, correctly cited in the bond schedule. And the resolution with the bond schedule also contained here, also, again, updates citations so that they are correct, and then adds in fine amounts that are needed and necessary for issuing those citations. So basically, this is just a cleanup to make sure that everything is linked up and fits together, and adds in a couple of additional state criminal offenses that we have more enforcement authority to to engage in.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 06-4-18 and Resolution R 6-2-18.
Second. A motion and a second to approve Ordinance 06-4-18 and Resolution R 6-2-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. A, action on 2018, 2019 retail alcohol license renewals.
Proved approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those licenses. All those in favor say All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Action on Resolution Number R 6-1-18, disallowance of claim, Ms. Deborah Burnt.
Could somebody explain this to us, please?
As noted in your green sheet, Ms. Burnt seeks damages for an alleged injury where she stepped in, allegedly into an exposed hole in the sidewalk on Home Green Way in October of 2016. Are the village's insurance carrier, review the matter and recommend it, and disallowance of the claim.
She stepped into what?
A hole. A hole in the sidewalk. Allegedly.
Okay. I'm going to move to approve the resolution thus disallowing the claim. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R 6-1-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Okay. Number, we're at number 12. Items for next agenda. I have none right now. If you have any, call the village hall. Number 13.
Move to go to closed session.
Second.
Do you want me to read the...
Yes, please.
Number 13, closed session items during the meeting of the village board of the Village of Ashwabnan may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 1985, sub 1E, for the purpose of, it's fourfold. One, possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the investigate, investing of public funds regarding the development of parcel VA 162 related to tax incremental district. Number three, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Number two, possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the sale and purchase of parcel, parcel VA 56-4-1 related to tax incremental district. Number five, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Number three, updating possible action on development projects related to Home Green Way parcels VA 89.2 and VA 89.7 in tax incremental district numbers three and five, where competitive and bargaining reasons require a closed session. And lastly, in four, possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the sale and purchase of parcel VA 228-14-H-14, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Also in closed session, item B, Wisconsin State Statute, Section 1985, 1C, for the purpose of possible discussion and action on considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of department heads over which the village board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility as it pertains to employee compensation. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 1985, sub 2, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I have a motion by trustee Mark Williams. I'm sorry, Madam President, who was the second?
The second was, I think we had a motion, the second was Gary.
Me, me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Roll call. Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Mel Chesky.
Yes.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
And once again, trustees Zerbal and Bukowski are excused. All those in favor?
They already said yes.